First, I'd like to just excuse Kevin Euler tonight. He is our leader here usually, and I'm acting on his behalf tonight. Also, Commissioner Carden will be a little bit late tonight. So, we're going to go ahead and start on time. And we will start with item number one on the agenda, the minutes. That has to do with our commissioners.
I wasn't here. They look good, but I would hear as if they're accurate.
I'd entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second item on our agenda tonight is an annexation. It is the Lynn Laufson annexation. And we will go ahead and, Brandon, if you'd like to go ahead and give us the lowdown on that.
Thank you. I appreciate Lynn being here tonight. We'll keep it pretty brief. Lynn approached the county to build a barn down off of the River Bottoms Road. And this area that's highlighted in yellow is what they're asking Lynn to annex into the city to resolve a discrepancy where the property line goes through the house so that they'll feel comfortable issuing that barn building permit. And so what you've got before you, that's the really short version of the story. What you have before you is just an annexation of .2 acres. And we're looking to match the zoning with the zoning on the remainder of the property, which is R1-9. And so tonight, we'd be looking for a recommendation to the city council, and we've provided some findings in the staff report for your consideration as well.
So 968 East and 856 East will get bigger, or 956?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of them.
Both of them will get bigger. Yeah.
So this is Lynn's house right here. And then his neighbor, I can't remember your neighbor's last name.
Kramer.
Kramer.
Yes.
So, we're adding a little bit to his backyard, as well as Lynn Laufson's backyard. It's already property that they own. You can see it's in a couple different parcels. If we go to the next slide, you can see the city boundary comes currently around it like that, and so we're just adding this little bit to clean it up.
Is that on the hillside?
Yes. Well, actually, no. This part is up on the flats.
Oh.
And then Lynn owns down to the River Bottoms Road, and so the hillside drops from there.
Thank you. You have the applicant here, Mr. Laufson. Would you like to say anything before we go any further?
All I'd like to say is, unbeknownst to me...
You come up to the microphone and just...
I'm okay. The city-county line went through the middle of my house. So this is going to resolve that issue that's been in play for about 22 years now. So that's all I'd amount to, is so that I won't have part of my house in the city, part of the house in the county. This will put it all in the city.
Great.
Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Lynn. Okay, having heard the description and whatnot, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommends the annexation of the Laufson property with the R1-9 residential zoning designation. Recommends approval of that.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes. Our next item on the agenda is...
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lynn. Our next item on the agenda is a public hearing that involves an I-15 West general plan change. Brandon, we'll go ahead and let you explain that.
Be happy to. So what we have before you tonight is an amendment to the general plan. This has been initiated by the city, and we're looking at two areas. If we go to the next slide, on the left, you'll see the existing general plan land use designations. We've got the green right here, which is agricultural. And then we've got the light gray, which is light industrial. And so the proposal, if you look on the right, would put both of those areas to a low-density residential designation. And so, for instance, if the city had a property owner come towards and would like to annex in, under the current proposal, if it was in agricultural, the two zones that we deem consistent with that designation would be our RR, which is a five-acre zone, and the AE, which is an agricultural, which is, if you're looking for a residential use, it's a 40-acre requirement. And so if it went to the low, we associate the R1-12, so about a 12,000 square foot lot, with that zoning designation.
Is that the highest density and the low-density designation? Is R1-12?
R1-12 is low. It's the only designation...
It's the only designation?
Below.
Got it.
Yeah.
Okay. R1-15 though, right?
R1-12.
But R1-15 would also work?
Yeah.
Okay.
We generally tie that with the state density.
Okay.
But obviously, we've got a lot of clubs in the bag that we could play with as far as R1-20, R1-40, whatever.
Gotcha.
Ultimately, it would come down to what the city council feels comfortable with.
Just for everyone here, would you explain where this is?
Yeah, so we've got I-15 right here, running on an angle. And so we're west of I-15, and this is 8,000 south in Utah County. We're north of that, all the way up to the river. And so we're looking at just this green area here and just this gray area here. The mixed-use blue and the commercial and everything east of I-15 is not being proposed to be amended.
So the change is coming on the west side of the freeway?
Correct.
What's this, what's this zone right here?
Medium.
Medium, yes.
Medium density? And that matches over on that side. So this is the Benjamin interchange right here?
Correct. Yep.
And to go along with what, with what Commissioner Joseph said...
I guess.
Sorry.
You're a jerk.
That's the highest density it can be. People can keep doing what they're already doing on that land right now.
Correct.
But it opens up the possibility...
All of this is still in the county.
Okay.
So we're looking to the future as far as the vision that we have for the area, if and when annexation is requested.
I see. So it's the general plan, not official?
I don't know if you can see it, but see this line right here? That kind of hash line? That's the current city boundary. And so everything west of I-15 is still unincorporated. It's in Utah County. And the policy with Spanish Fork City has been, when someone's ready and willing to annex into the city, we'll consider it and usually invite them in.
So this is simply a guidance of future zoning, if and when they're ever annexed in, and doesn't affect the current uses of their properties today in the county?
Correct.
Okay.
And these property owners on both sides of the freeway, should they decide to continue to farm, that's great.
Yeah, even if they're in the city, they can continue to farm.
Okay. Thanks, Lynn. Any more questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, so we are going to go into public hearing and invite the public to come up and say whatever they would like. We will, in the interest of the number of people that are here and the time that we have, would ask you to hold your comments to about three minutes, and we'll try to time that the best we can. And if we could get everyone to kind of pay attention to what's being said so that we don't just repeat the same thing over and over and over again. If your comment's already been offered, then consider that to be enough. But at the same time, if you have something that you want to contribute, that's what we're here for, is a public hearing. So, having said that, we will go into public hearing. We will also ask you, if you want to make a comment, to come up to the lectern here, state your name and about where you live or where your property is. So, we'll open it to the public. Sure, come on up.
There was a lot of talk about I-15, but the border there, is that 3200, the state highway, or is that the railroad track?
That would be the railroad tracks.
Okay. And what's the designation of the red and the blue? You explained the blue pretty good, but...
The red is commercial, and the blue is mixed-use, which would allow for commercial or higher-density residential.
And that is the UP line that runs up 8,000? I live just a little bit away from there.
Would you state your name, please?
Darrell Hawkins.
Darrell Hawkins. Anyone else?
Please, come on up.
I talked to you plenty.
Okay, it's Mont Williams. Okay, now, the question I have is, it's high-density, commercial. Say you've got a project and you want to expand that. Say, like, down the road, we want to see if part of our field's in, part of our field's not. Are we locked into that, this line here and this line's not, you know, or something? Can we change that and make it high-density or commercial or something?
Great question. And we'll go ahead and take that question, and we are going to have staff answer that at the end of everybody's comments. That's a great question, and it's one that's pretty easily answered as well. Others?
My name's Russell Backstead. My question is, you talked about, so this is just for future assessment, and then you talked about future annexation. Is it the property owners themselves that request to be annexed in, or is it the city decides they want to annex that area into it?
Good question. We'll answer that as well. How are you?
Good. Rex Larson, owner of Larson Family Farms. Can I have a pointer?
Okay.
Part of our farm is right in this area. Part of our farm is up in this area, not shown on the slide. And that area, I'm curious, is there a way to expand the view to...
Not that way, but this.
Okay, so we're right, right here. Okay, help me understand what your thoughts are for this area as that affects what we're doing. What's the plan for that area? And is there going to be an interchange here?
Yes.
Those types of things I'd like to know because that affects what we do with our farm. The other area is where we finally found something that makes money in farming, and that's a corn maze.
And it's a good one.
That's right there. Your city recognized us as a business of the month last September, and so we're proud to be part of the city and part of the community. But we also want to, well, you can see the corn maze right there.
That's right there.
So...
Now, was that intentional, or were you just drunk when you did that?
That was very intentional. Took us about two days to cut it with a zero-turn lawnmower and a GPS on it, so...
Wow. It's fantastic.
I took my Cub Scouts there.
Bet. What's that?
I took my Cub Scouts there.
Well, thank you.
Delightful place.
We appreciate it. And this, as I've said, we finally found something that makes us some money. It unites our family. We have, I'm the fifth generation, and when we get the family there helping, it's seven generations that have worked this same ground. And so that's pretty important to us. And I hope it's important to the city, because if we get squeezed out here, we want to move over to the other farm. But, okay, thank you. Now, put the blue and the yellow up, a little further to the north there. So what, come on, pointer. Tell me about this area. Will someone address that and what your future plans are and how that affects our farm that's in this area as well? If we do have to leave down here, we're, our vision, or my daughter's vision, I should say, and I may invite her up, is agriculture's getting squeezed out. We would like to create something, a legacy farm there, that we can preserve agriculture, we can teach future generations the importance of this area, the importance of the families that have farmed here, and maybe even use it as a way to help kids that are having problems get straightened out, you know? Put them in the, with the shovel in the ditch and help them.
Solves our problems.
Right. So that's my concern, is to understand better, you know, those areas of your plan.
Great. Thanks, Rex. We'll address that.
Thank you.
Do you want to continue all the way through? Do you want to, like, take a break or want to answer questions? If you go through with it?
Would you like to answer some questions?
Okay, we'll just go through.
Clarence Lewis. I second what Rex was talking about, just barely. I think it's important that we can preserve some of that agriculture over there. I have noticed that Whittaker is starting to install a sewer trunk line right there, coming down. And my question is, are there any current annexation requests or anything that's going to happen immediately? And if so, what's going on?
Thanks.
Again, I'm curious on the size of the lots they were saying, and then again, water. Are these homes going to be drilling wells, or are they going to be supplied with, like, city water or what? Just kind of out of curiosity on the well system.
Good point.
Do we go out of public hearing?
Want me to start, if anyone has the others?
Are there any other comments? If not, we'll go out of public hearing, and we will go ahead and go through these in the order that we received them. And if there's other comments and stuff, we'll be glad to handle those as well. So we'll start with, I think, Mont Williams had a great question about how these lines are drawn and whether they're absolute.
Excellent. Which, incidentally, that's a great question. These are not intended at all to be hard and fast lines, and that's simply because we can't envision at this point in time exactly what makes sense for one property the next. However, we do know that in close proximity, just use this as an example, we do know that in close proximity to an interchange, like the Salem-Benjamin interchange, where there's really good visibility for properties, really high traffic counts and some of those types of things, that that's fairly unique. And that's probably one of the few areas that we have in the community that might be able to support some significant retail kind of development and that sort of a thing. So, again, we don't know where that stops and starts and so forth today, but, for example, to maybe use your specific question, not just in that context, if we were approached by a developer that had a concept that roughly fit in with what we're talking about here, and maybe that project bled over into one adjacent designation, or maybe didn't even go that far, or whatever the case might be, we would use the discretion and the latitude that this type of description gives us to try to do what makes sense in that particular case, essentially making it easier, and I'd say the same thing, to try to do what makes sense rather than to have hard and fast lines that we might be consistently changing. Because 10 years before, when those lines were put on a map, we didn't know exactly what the end result would be. So, does that help and answer your question? Okay.
So are you planning on in the, like, the next five years, right there at the 8,000 and the Benjamin exit, putting in gas stations and condos?
I'll tell you what, we really like commercial development, so I'll just speak to that for a second. If somebody wanted to do some kind of commercial development down there, and the property owner wanted to annex and to have that developed in the city, they would be received very, very well by us as the city. At least that historically has been Spanish Fork's thought about, about commercial development. Residential development, multifamily housing, that type of a thing, we typically look at that with a much more critical eye. But likewise, that's generally planned for in the area. We expect to have some of that. But it'd be probably a little bit more, more of a process too, I guess I would say.
Planning on the South Utah Valley University campus going in down there?
Payson, I understand, right? They have some plans for it.
Except for the gas stations, whatever.
Well, we dream big, so we're dreaming about something bigger than a gas station, but yeah, I might start with that.
But that would be, that would be the landowner coming to the city, working with the developer, wanting to have that use for their land. So they've worked out a deal with a developer that's beneficial to them, and the city would allow that zoning in that area. It wouldn't be the city having any interest in that. It'd be representing the landowner.
Correct. Does the city have intentions of putting sewer water down there? So that's a really big deal, and that's related to one of the other questions that came up, and we've got our expert here with us, Michael Clark. I'm just going to quickly try to address that. Development in this area and even on the other side of I-15 right now is not possible. We can't provide sewer service, we can't provide water, we can't provide power. That's changing as we speak. Sewer lines are being installed that eventually will get sewer service down to a lift station that's being built this year in this area that starts to make it financially feasible for developers to develop throughout the land, I would say, all the way to I-15 and beyond. That is part of why we're having this conversation now. It's really in anticipation of expecting that property owners are going to start to get approached by developers about the idea of buying your land and developing it, really.
The question about, is it property owners that request annexation or the city that decides to annex?
Cities can initiate annexations. However, there are requirements as to how many property owners are, I would just say, in favor of being annexed. So, without the consent of the majority of the property owners involved, the city could not initiate an annexation moving forward. The vast majority of annexations that we consider as the city are initiated by property owners, though. That's almost always how it works. In the time I've been here, we've done a couple around the airport, for example, to allow for the extension of a runway there where the city's taken the lead. And I'll say this, we have talked with some property owners down in this area, you know, around some of the Larson family properties and so forth, about maybe the city initiating an annexation just to try to make it easier to get one big annexation in at once instead of some number of smaller ones. But typically, it's property owners that initiate that.
Going along with that question, someone asked, is there any current annexation requests in?
Not in this area. We have a couple that are closer to the airport. We don't have anything this far south at all that we've seen. I would expect that in the next year or two that that probably will change, though. And again, that's part of why we're having a conversation tonight.
Lot size, what's the lot size of the low-density?
So about a quarter of an acre, really, is the smallest lot size that's allowed in that, in what's being proposed tonight, I would say. Three homes per acre is kind of what that equates to, maybe just a little bit less than that.
But wasn't some of that high-density, some low-density? The high-density more than the red and blue?
So, that's a good, yeah. So I was just talking about the areas that we're proposing to change from agricultural and industrial to residential. That's quarter-acre lot size roughly, but you're absolutely right. You know, like I said, with the idea that we might have, let's just say, a Home Depot around the interchange, we would expect to see some maybe higher-density residential or maybe some office uses next to that instead of going right to single-family homes on quarter-acre lots. And that's kind of what we're trying to depict with the map.
Does the annexation have to happen continuously with the city or do it as an island?
Has to be contiguous. Good question.
Another question to throw in there, if we keep hearing rumors of maybe more freeway exits on the off, and also the train tracks are going to come, or is that going to go on or off?
Okay. So, perfect segue to Mr. Larson's question. Perfect. Thank you. So if you can maybe just scroll up so we can talk about this. None of this is set in stone, but we're working, frankly aggressively, with UDOT and with UTA. We're working with UDOT because we think that having an interchange someplace at basically where Center Street right now crosses I-15 or hits I-15 is going to be essential for Spanish Fork, largely because of development to the south of us and what will happen to Main Street and just how that will become dysfunctional from a traffic standpoint if we don't have another point of access to I-15 that can take some of that traffic off of Main Street. I'm going to guess that that's not going to happen for another 10 years. Chance that it might be a year or two sooner, I think it's probably more likely that it's going to be a year or two later. And UTA has had plans in the works for a long time to extend commuter rail south of Provo. For example, they've selected property in Springville for a stop there. I think they at least have a site in mind for a stop in Payson, and they indeed have said that in some proximity, again to that Center Street, I-15 junction, that would be the place where a commuter rail stop would be in Spanish Fork. They're doing a study right now, indeed, to try to confirm whether that would function or not, whether there would be enough ridership and that type of a thing to justify what's really a tremendously expensive project to bring commuter rail south of Provo. We in Spanish Fork feel like, I'm going back to my predecessors here when I say this, that promises have been made to Spanish Fork for decades that commuter rail was going to come to Spanish Fork and provide that service. So we've been advocating pretty strongly to make sure that that stays on UTA's radar screen and that indeed that happens someday, which is precisely why we have planned for some pretty intense development around where an interchange would be and a commuter rail stop, thinking that, you know, that's really an ideal place, among other things, for some pretty high-density housing, probably some commercial opportunities and those sorts of things. But I think to a large extent, that probably doesn't become very feasible until you have an interchange and you have commuter rail here. And I think it probably will be gone before that, you know, really comes to fruition. As that to say that, for example, Larson's plans will have changed by then, but we are looking out in the future, I think, with any kinds of projects like that. We're talking about hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars of improvements.
Can you explain or give me an idea of what's showing there with Center Street? Are there the overpassing, the underpassing? What is all those lines?
So, Mike, you probably will be able to give a clearer picture. I mean, it will be, it will be an interchange. So, Center Street will still go underneath, I think.
Yes.
What about you?
It's the first stop.
First stop, it doesn't?
I can open up the drawing.
And there's no crossing at Center, right? Obviously, so.
There's gravel.
We've got a conceptual plan, if we can find it. We'll dig that up and see if, likewise, if anybody wants to do a, a more in-depth conversation on that, you can stop by our office anytime, and we can pull things out. UT and UDOT have done enough studies to where, for example, they've given us a footprint of space that they need to be able to construct an interchange. If you can think about some of the projects that have been developed on this side of I-15 in recent years, there's a townhome development and a church that was built several years ago. And on each of those projects, we exercised some care to make sure that the footprint that UDOT had given us for the on-ramp, for example, northbound on-ramp, that sufficient room was being set aside so that nobody's gonna have to buy townhomes or anything like that when the interchange is built. So, yeah, the plan would be to go over I-15 like that. So, this is where the townhomes are right now. If you can picture that, this is when that church was still in construction here. This is the old Anderson, that's how I still know it, even though the elevator is gone.
The commuter rail, would it be the one that's right along I-15?
That's, UTA actually owns that line, so yes, that's where that would be.
This is the old Depot, Depot Road, is that in city limits?
Depot Road is in the city, yes.
Half of what you say is Depot Road is.
Going further to the north, okay.
Right, the gravel, the gravel says it's theirs and his camp. And Billy's camp.
The old Depot itself.
The Depot itself is camp.
So, another question that Rex Larson had was about if, if the property that they have near the Benjamin exit now goes away for whatever purpose or reason, would he have a likelihood of being able to move to their property, right down in here, right?
Yeah.
Would he be able to continue to maybe move his corn maze operation to that property?
I'm sure.
If it were annexed into the city?
Yeah. Typically, when we annex properties without a development proposal, they get annexed with an agricultural zone. That might change in ten years, and it's hard to say how, how a city council might be looking at things then. But there's that way to look at it. And of course, if it's zoned agricultural, then that would be precisely what you would want to see from a regulatory kind of perspective. And then there's the other side of it, which, I mean, this is Spanish Fork, and I think anybody that wanted to, to continue to do what you've described, any place in the community, that's probably gonna be received pretty well for a long time into the future. So, I-
Do you have an acupressure?
Oh, I guess. We don't, but I'll tell you what, we have several zoning districts that I would say would make it so we don't need that. You could do what you're doing and a whole lot of other things as permitted uses, yeah.
We had work with the county.
That's what I was about.
Right, the, the, the corn maze.
That's why I'm hesitant, because there are issues that might arise.
Very good. Mr. Lewis?
But I guess you, we point out that you can keep, keep that be in a corn maze for as long as you want, until you decide to sell it to a developer or do something different with it.
Unless we get so many people around it to-
Customers!
Lives.
That's-
That could be a problem, to make that change in my mind. They talk, just do some houses and apartments, they're, they're potential customers, but-
In Springville, you have a perfect example of that, right? There's a whole bunch of things develop, a whole bunch of development, but there's a corn maze area right there next to it.
They have to shut down earlier than we do.
Hmm.
And that's, that's a concern, because part of our major income is our haunted, part of our maze that goes later. So, we want to be able to be good, good neighbors, but still do what we need to do.
Makes perfect sense.
Mr. Lewis asked a question about the sewer trunk line that's going in and the current plans down there. Have we talked enough about that, or is there something?
I missed a water question.
Yeah.
I, I will.
Yeah.
Water lines are last.
And again, we've got our expert here. Since I'm up, I'll try to answer that. Any development that happens in Spanish Fork is required to tie into our water system. And our water sources are miles and miles to the east of us, up Spanish Fork Canyon and so forth. There would not be additional wells drilled or anything like that in any part of the community, including out here, to serve development. So, in fact, the, the developments I'm talking about right now in Leland, they're tying into the city's water system that's simply coming from the east and being extended further to the west to serve development.
So, they're gonna continue on 8,000, go underneath the freeway and head west?
When? That would be development-driven. So, when a developer's ready to upfront the cost of that, that will happen. I, I think it will happen, yeah. And in, in a variety of ways, we have some mechanisms that, that help pay for some of that, but it doesn't happen until there's somebody that wants the service.
Dave, how does that work with wells, with people who are on wells right now? The, the city's water is connected in with it, but then as it, as the city's water comes down, but there's these properties that have wells, what, how did the, what happens to the wells when they-
Deal with that from time to time? Do we have a real consistent policy on that?
So, if they sell, if you develop houses on, obviously the well is capped and it's no longer needed, right? Because the use that required the well is no longer the use that's there. If there's a house that wants to stay on their own well, and even though it's developing around them, typically our stance has been, well, keep using it, because you have the rights to do it and you're not developing. But typically, once you trigger a development, you sell the land, you develop it yourself, whichever, at that point, the waterline needs to be brought, and you're brought into the city water system.
Are you required to cap the well at that point?
Yeah, unless you own it underneath your house.
Well, you can, you have the city water and the well?
Yeah.
Okay.
But that well right can be, can, can be marketed.
Is that better? Okay.
Good job, Dave.
Yeah, because typically the wells that we have are, you know, 1,500, 2,000 gallons a minute, and most of the wells that are drilled aren't putting out that amount. It has to be owned and maintained by the city. And to be honest, most of our springs up the canyon provide triple what we need at this point, so we don't operate our wells as much as we did. And we try, we're trying to go away from them as much as we can, because why pump the water when we have it already up the mountain? So, we're actually using less well water as time goes on for the foreseeable decade plus, two decades.
It also helps the, the landowners and those well holders that are on the west side of the county to not have those, those wells pumped. You know, it's been shown to most of the people that are here tonight, that in Spanish Fork was using the wells, and they turned them on, it affected the flow on most of the wells west of Spanish Fork, so.
Most business don't wait.
So.
Within two days.
Yep. So, do we have any other discussion from commissioners?
One point, Mr. Lewis asked about future developments that we're gonna go on down there, and we do have that multifamily project down across from Revere.
Yeah, we're just now starting to see, and it's, I think it's simply because nothing had been possible before, you know, again, a lift station over here started to become a reality. But we are talking with people about developing properties over here. A gentleman bought this several years ago with the expectation of developing it, and I think he continues to, to look for a developer to work with on that. We've talked more extensively as of late with somebody about developing this property here. So, that is coming.
I've got a question. How about the roads and the access down through what Benjamin and 8,000 South? 8,000 South, since they put the gravel pit on the west, it's almost gone to where you take your hand, you like to step out on the road.
So, I think he thought-
Is there any plans of routing some of that traffic around this area, either, so that they can handle it, so there are roads that can handle the ground traffic?
I have no idea. Honestly, I don't. To date, that's been a Utah County problem, and I think a UDOT problem. I believe 8,000 South is a state road.
You have a fifth county, fifth county from the freeway to third.
Or is it county beyond? Obviously, if we annex land on the other side of I-15, and it's a county road, then that becomes a city road, and we're responsible to maintain it and so forth. Frankly, I think that, this is just from what I've understood about other, other situations where we're maybe dealing with something like what you described, you know, traffic coming from a particular use and trying to, to require it to use a particular route. I think there are, there are limited options that we have to compel people, you know, it's a public route to, to go one way or another. But generally speaking, city streets get much better maintained than county roads. And as development happens anywhere, it is development that pays for the road improvements and that type of a thing. But traffic will certainly increase in the area. You know, with everything that we're talking about, that's probably one of the, one of the downsides.
But, saying that, the road will be widened as development comes as well. So, where it is today would look something more like this, or bigger, in the future. And I'm not sure if it's county or not on 8,000 South before the interchange.
There used to be county, less of-
West of the interchange, but between the interchange going east, that's UDOT for sure. So, they have standards, and it'll look like this, if not bigger, once they're done. But development would fund the widening, so it's kind of, we're not gonna pay, to us collectively as taxpayers, pay to maintain a huge road when there's no immediate need for turn lanes and everything else.
Well, that's what you're saying. You start building industry, and it's called Depot, and we've got a road that's 22 feet wide.
For sure, for sure. And to West Mountain, that may stay that way until the county widens it. But anywhere the development actually happens within the city, they'd be required to, instead of a 20, you know, you can't see, Mike, for sure. So, right now, the road might only be this wide, but in the future, they'd widen it, you know, 15, 20 feet on either side. So, you have turn lanes, you have a median turn lane. It'll then be built to facilitate the traffic that's-
That's what you can handle. That, that was my concern.
And it handles wear, and it's probably much better than it does now.
Yeah, you'll have four or five inches of asphalt, except for, it'll just wear a lot better.
I feel for you, sir, because I'm one of those grasshoppers that rides my bike along those roads. Get a little nervous out there.
I mean, the shoulder of the, of the yellow hawk.
Is there one more question?
And you're talking about roads, 7,300 South, the next one north, is that on your plans to widen that when you take over?
I'm not sure which one.
It's nice south in town, coming out of town, and then go over the freeway, turns into 7,300.
Three-lane or five-lane? Three-lane, right?
Three.
Collector.
Yeah.
Short answers? Yes. Both in terms of just widening it to accommodate two-way traffic, but it'll actually be a three-lane road, so a turn lane, and different things like that. Not just a local street, we'd call that a collector, with the idea that that, that's, that's a choice route for people to take, and it needs to be wider to accommodate the, the traffic load.
Should we put an on and off ramp there?
Nope, nope. UDOT, the, the closest we could go is Center Street with an on and off ramp. They'll only let us have them with a certain frequency, so.
Okay.
We'd probably take one, I'll say that. But I don't think that's gonna happen.
Thanks, Dave. Any more questions from, or comments from the commission?
But I think my comment is, the questions were all good, but a lot of them didn't have to do with the two part, two sections we're looking to amend. I mean, we got, we got a great update from the staff, appreciate it, on everything else, but I don't know if we saw much concern or comment about the two general plan amendments.
Changes. The actual changes.
I have a question about it. How come the lines are crooked? I mean, I, I, I'm kinda dumb, but.
Why are they curving?
Yeah, why are they curving? What, what's the idea behind that?
Yeah.
That's a good question.
Dave starts coloring.
Dave can't color within the lines.
That's an old joke.
We'll keep saying it.
This is really just intended to try to describe the idea that we have, that you start with a really intense land use. And I'll go back to the same example that I used earlier. Let's just say Home Depot at the interchange. And we don't know exactly how that maybe fits on a particular parcel and that sort of a thing, and we don't know how big maybe the property next to it is, and how that's configured. But we do know that next to something like a Home Depot, we wanna see either maybe some kind of office development, or some multifamily development, or something like that. So, we have the red, then we show the blue. Red being the Home Depot, and the blue being, let's just say, an office development. And then we know that next to that, we probably wanna have some kind of residential development that might be something other than single-family homes, but maybe not big apartments. So, we have a different designation to kind of describe that. It's really just about that relationship, going from one land use to another and another, with the understanding, like I said earlier, when this was put together back in 2010, we didn't know, you know, whether, for example, the commercial development down here would be 40 acres in size, or 20, or 100. But we do know that at the interchange, that's what we wanna see. And we know that next to that, we wanna see something different and so forth. So, with that, this gives us a lot of flexibility, I think, to be just pragmatic in trying to see what works as things evolve and develop and so forth. But, right, it is kind of confusing sometimes when you look at it. And this doesn't math match. For example, the other map that we use a lot for a totally different purpose, our zoning map, for a lot of reasons, it does follow property lines, and those lines are very rigid and, and have very specific meaning and that type of a thing. This is more of just an idea.
So, the red's commercial, the blue is?
The blue, we call it mixed use, so it could be-
And then the gray?
And then the way that we see it out here today, and this indeed is what's proposed to be changed, the gray's industrial.
And the line green?
And this is-
That's where mine is, the line green.
So, so, just to maybe kind of recap, then, those two areas are what this is about tonight, changing from industrial and the green to designations that would allow for residential development.
So, did something trigger that change, or?
The sewer line is the big thing.
And there's no current developers that are ready to pounce once it's in, or is there something that's gonna start throwing that away?
I, not that I know of specifically, but I've heard from some people, it's maybe a third-hand now, that property owners have been contacted by developers that know that there's a sewer line. You guys might know much better than I do. I'd be, I'd be shocked if developers aren't out there speculating and trying to tie up land, you know, maybe for less, less per acre now than what it will be when development does start to happen and that sort of a thing. I've heard that's happening, and like I said, I'd be shocked if it isn't, because that infrastructure is a big deal. That changes everything.
We have, we have I-15's mill, so what's going on in that area?
No change now, yeah.
So, if we're still doing comments, one, so you were talking, Todd, about how we're not quite sure what everybody thinks about changing from industrial and agricultural to low-density, load, to a low-density zone. And from what I've been able to glean or pick up from, from the comments, is people are wanting more to know what the plan is so that they can know what to do, or what is gonna happen with their property, what if they wanna develop their property, or if they wanna preserve their farmland, or if they're excited for a developer to come contact them and they sell their land. And, and so, it sounds like Mr. Larson would really like to have a legacy farm, and, but I'm, I'm, I'm not hearing-
That property isn't in what we're talking about for this proposal.
Oh, yeah. Oh, right, that is.
Great update. I mean, we're glad to have those questions and answer them, but-
Right.
his is already, I mean, it's red here, it's red existing.
Yeah.
So it's it's the same. That that is not changing what we're discussing tonight. The, now, there would have been, there would have been a, could it be like an industrial plant put out here? And that, with what we're proposing, wouldn't be possible with this change. This would be low-density housing instead of, you know, concrete tilt-ups.
So the proposal makes sense to me if this goes and is developed, a developable area, to change from those, the current plan to low-density housing.
Yeah, and that's what this is. It's guidance for some future date wherein there'll be zoning options within this general plan designation. And again, it doesn't change the rights of the current landowners in any way, shape or form. If anything, it just gives them different options when there's an annexation. Correct. No, it does not.
If you'll notice, we have, we have the city, the city lines here now. And so if there are any, if there are any other uses that come in on either side and there's a request to be annexed, the property owner will be the first one to know. Nobody's gonna come and go through all those steps if they haven't talked to you guys individually or as a group, whatever it might be, before that happens. So the city's just trying to make growth out there. We're trying to plan that growth so that it takes place in an area that makes sense to the future developers that come in and not have somebody come in and buy a piece that they think that they're gonna go in and do some kind of a huge project that's already on our, on our general map that it's supposed to be, you know, we would rather have a residential. Things can change and they may in the future. They have changed now. But right now, this is the proposal, but it's not even annexed yet. This is, this is, this is changing our master plan, the city's master plan. And so this is what we see as the future. And we think it's, you know, I think that staff has done a great job in going through all of this and looking at other cities and how they've grown. You know, you can see other places where they've ended up being kind of a patchwork quilt and it's kind of difficult. You know, you can go to other cities. I have a brother that lives in Riverton and in the middle of these high-density housing developments, there's still farms. They're trying to water and graze hay and grain and corn, you know. And, you know, that is probably what's gonna happen here until it fills in. But for anybody that has ground on the east side, you can see how quickly that can change. And there's nothing that changes it faster than a, than a, an interchange, you know, freeway interchange. Okay, if there's no more comment or any more questions.
You have another comment?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that the proposed general plan amendment from agricultural and industrial to low-density residential be recommended for approval based on the findings and recommendations of the staff, DRC.
I second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So that passes.
And this'll go, this, this has to go before the city council for this to officially happen.
I believe you noticed it, or May fourth with the city council?
May fourth.
May the fourth.
Did everybody hear that? This'll go before the city on May fourth. And so if you have further questions, you know, you can, you can present those to the city council and address your concerns there as well.
And some of, some of the questions, I think you would benefit from sitting down with Dave Anderson or one of the staff because you could get a lot more back and forth as far as what's the future plans in an area and utilities and roads. I think, I think some of you would have actually benefited more from a sit-down with one of the staff than in this meeting. You would, I think you would have gotten more out of it as well.
Sometimes it seems a little intimidating.
Yeah.
And I'd really like to thank you guys that have come to discuss this tonight. It was extremely informative to me and to see the concern in the community. If you guys don't speak up as landowners, you know, you'll be, you'll be, you'll be run over by the bus instead of driving. So thank you for coming and thanks for your opinions. Our next item on the agenda is three B, right?
Yeah, and if you don't mind, I'll borrow your.
Be careful, it's dangerous.
Let the room clear for a second, but that was a good, good insight that was mentioned a second ago. So as staff, we usually take these through to the DRC first. Sometimes what we started out with initially, might get additional conditions or additional findings. But what you see in your reports before you has been to the DRC first.
And you could just say staff, DRC staff.
DRC is made up of.
Staff.
Various members of the city. Alrighty, the next item is a two-part item. We have a general plan amendment and then the following item on the agenda is the zoning associated with the same area. So we're looking at twenty-seven hundred north interchange, which you can see here on the map. Here's twenty-seven hundred north right here. We know that in a couple years, this will be a functioning interchange. I believe the date is twenty-twenty-four. And so in the meantime, the city, if you recall, it's probably been a couple months to a half year at this point, we did the twenty-seven hundred north vision study where a consultant was hired, looked at the interchange and potential uses and uses and opportunities that the city would want to capture and and act upon. And so these two items before you tonight are partly in a result of that. As Dave was mentioning, Director Anderson was mentioning, this becoming an interchange obviously provides really convenient access to commercial areas and it would be appropriate for those changes around the interchange. And so the first item, and we'll take them separately, we'd appreciate a motion on each individually. So the first one is the general plan. So once again, we're looking at roughly a hundred and sixty acres. On the left, you can see what's currently existing. So we're changing, proposing an amendment, changing from business park, which is this dark blue, almost a purplish, I can't, we've got a lighter blue over here. This would be the business park designation and then you see the light gray is industrial. Once again, red is commercial. And so the areas that we're focusing on are right here. You can see the change to commercial, right here, change to commercial. And then over here on the east side, you've got some changes right here from industrial and business park to mixed use and commercial. And so that, that is the first item.
Question.
Quick question. I think that, I think that Sean is gonna ask this one question.
Is this in Spanish Fork or will, is this Springville?
This is currently within unincorporated Utah County, but it's in the annexation policy plan for Springville City.
Okay, and that's why we're not, that's why we're not addressing that area.
That's why we don't have a land use designation associated with that property.
Okay.
But the, but the blue there bleeds over.
Yes.
From Spanish Fork two.
This is all, this is already in Spanish Fork here. And then this is proposed in our annexation plan, areas that we would annex into the city.
So is it the railroad that's the line there that would designate that?
Yes.
Very good.
Okay, and my other question is, is which zone has something like hotels? What's the, where, where does a hotel sit in a zone or?
Generally, commercial.
Commercial, not the business park.
Correct.
Okay.
It, it might be a use, I can look that up real fast. Yeah, definitely C two, the general commercial. And it does not look like an option in the BP. Any other questions?
What are some things that are allowed in business park?
Oh, great question. We can actually pull it up. That way viewers or recording will capture what we're looking at. It's just in city code. Go to land use. And then part three. You can also use this dropdown over here, so zoning ordinance. And then zoning district regulations. And then you can click specifically on BP. So the top is permitted uses, so these are outright permitted, car wash, childcare centers, convenience stores, et cetera. You can see the list there. What we don't see is hotels, motels, except for down here. So conditional use permit, generally, generally, those are a use that's permitted by right as well. But if there's any impacts that need to be mitigated, conditions, if they're appropriate, may be placed upon the use. That's a good catch. And I would assume that there's probably a lot of still over between the two.
Well, that's a business park zone. Are you saying in the general plan designation of business park, only the business park zone is?
Business park, yeah.
That's good, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions at this time? Okay, this is a public hearing and so we will now go into public hearing. And we will have the same more or less rules, regulations. If you have questions, please come up to the microphone and state your name and where your property might be or where you live, anything like that. And give us questions. We're going to try and hold comments to three minutes. We'll take the questions and then we'll take all the questions and then answer those questions after and have discussion. But we'd like to have your questions. If you hear your question already asked, please don't beat that dead horse and keep asking the same question. Last, the last hearing went very well and I appreciated those guys. So with that, we'll go ahead and let anyone that would like to speak come up and.
Hey, I appreciate the commission allowing me a minute. And my name is Andy Spencer. I work with Woodbury Corporation and I'm here with the Schwartz Irvine family. They are the family that holds the property on the far right picture. Oh, thank you. I apologize. I barely made it from spring break from out with my family. And so we, we wanted to make sure that we had, as a group, some representation here tonight. So what we're looking at is, is this area here.
Which, which one do they own? Which?
So the Schwartz family and this is Charlie and Irvine Schwartz here.
My mother's the one that's still living at ninety-four.
Oh, good for her, that's good.
So, yeah, so we're here in her behalf this evening. So we're actually in favor of the general plan change where it shows the commercial and the, and the mixed use here.
I still miss catch where, where's that property at? So.
So the property, whoop.
Just trying to get some context.
Nope, not a problem at all. So basically, we are looking at this property right here. Is it out?
So they, her mother owns all of that property?
Yeah, all, all the way up there, yeah, but.
The twenty-seven hundred or sixteen?
Yeah, twenty-seven hundred. It goes all the way from, from the property that the Swansons hold, right, right here. This is Swanson property and it's the property that extends, basically, it's a property that the current Canyon Creek Parkway extends through where, where it makes the bend and goes over the railroad there.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so, so we are in favor of the general plan change that's being proposed where it's got the commercial against the roadway, against twenty-seven hundred north and the mixed use component, there, there's our mixed use component there. We want to speak more to the zone change when we get there, but I just wanted to stand up and, and speak in favor of the general plan change in this case and probably have a little bit more to say on the zone change, maybe a little different zone that's being discussed, but.
So the city's batting five hundred in your, in your mind.
So far. We're, we're doing great. We, we are working with, with the city on this and we're working through. It's just something we're all figuring out. This is a very, and the whole reason that the city's looking at this general plan change is because this area is very dynamic, right? We've got the new interchange coming here. Things are going to be different in a few years when that interchange comes in here than they are today, right? And so we're, we're, I, we think the city's batting a thousand. We're just here to work together to, to look a little forward. So we think everything's great, but, so we're in favor of this and then we'll speak a little more to the zone change when we get to that, Adam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Hall and I have this property right, right there. And that's the C two, I guess. And I was wondering what businesses are allowed in C two. And also, when they put the interchange in, I don't think they can do that without putting the overpass with the railroad tracks because the train stops on the track, backs it out on the freeway, I assume. So if they put the overpass over the railroad tracks, how will I access my property? And I'm on Springville Utilities right now and I guess I would work with them to continue that.
Any others?
Any other comments or questions? I will ask one question. Do we want to address the zoning as well in this public hearing or do we need another public hearing for the zone change?
Whatever your preference is, usually where it's a separate agenda item, I prefer just to hold an additional public hearing specifically for that item, but it'd be fine to take any comments for that item since they're tied together. Just to address, if we can go back to the presentation slide. So anytime you have an existing use that's legal and then the city initiates a change, let's say, for instance, zoning, you can continue that, that use by right as a grandfather, the legal non-conforming use. And so, for instance, if there's some industrial uses there by the train tracks, even if the city were to change the general plan and change the zoning, you could continue those uses. Now, what's trickier is, and Mike jumped in, the designs that we've seen do include a fly over the railroad tracks. And my understanding is anytime UDOT damages property, so for instance, takes away an access, they're required to pay the value for that property. And so in my opinion, I could see access coming from the east in the future instead of, if there's an overpass, instead of coming from the north. As far as the C two uses, I think you had that up a second ago, Mike?
No, I'm pulling that up. UDOT has a whole right-of-way acquisition-type team. So if they haven't reached out to you at this point, it's preliminary enough that you, you're not quite there yet, I guess. Like, they usually reach out a year plus in advance of any type of, of situation like this. So if you haven't heard yet, it's not imminent, at least from my experience. It's not like they'll knock on your door and say, hey, by the way, we need to move this today, kind of thing. It'll be well imminent.
Have they talked, we, we have Jim? Uh, no, I don't know how they put the interchange in without putting that overpass in because that train, you just can't stop there for twenty minutes.
Jim, I, I know it's not my place to speak, but what you can do is you can go onto UDOT and you can search and buy twenty-seven hundred north corridor and they do show an access road to get back to your parcel right now on their layout, but you can study that, see what they're thinking. It does. It's on Canyon Creek Parkway right now. That's their current thinking. And, and I'm not trying to make decisions or representations for UDOT, but since it happened, we see.
We can have you step up to the mic.
Oh, sorry, I apologize. I was done speaking. I apologize. I just took a little bit of inspiration for it and thought, oh, I'll share. But what UDOT shows right now is actually a road that comes through your proxy parcel to get back to Jim's parcel. And then, as, as I indicated in my early comments, you know, this is a, this area's evolving and, and. And, and, uh, uh, we believe that both UDOT and the city are trying to do the right thing and trying to make, uh, it right for everybody, you know, how they can. They do show an overpass as staff has indicated and, and they are, uh, their, their plans don't put you without an access. But I, I'm not trying to represent things for them. It's just as much give you a little bit of information because we've been out looking too to see what they're thinking. So anyway, I apologize.
And I think Andy's hedging a little because he doesn't know UDOT may change their mind and he doesn't know. That's why, that's why, that's why he's hedging.
Represent what UDOT's gonna do.
Exactly. Right. Yeah.
True.
Any other questions on this item? Any other questions?
There is a question about utility access. Is that, or utility connections?
Springville Utilities.
Oh, that's Springville.
So it, it sounds like you've got an existing agreement with Springville City as was previously mentioned tonight. As the property redevelops or develops, uh, the expectation and policy is that that is on connected to city utilities. My guess is it was probably a situation where Springville was across the street, maybe Spanish Fork Utilities were nowhere near close by.
That's true.
But I don't, I don't know that we practice that anymore as far as policy goes with utilities.
As far as serving someone like that, uh, it's usually a city council decision, very odd or very infrequent situations.
I think it's likely that version happens in the county still.
Yes, probably true.
And then the C two?
So this is the list of permitted uses. Uh, maybe scroll down just a bit. We've got conditional uses and uses subject to conditions. If we go back up to the top, um, we have a purpose statement. And so we're mainly looking for those uses that want that visibility, want that convenient access. Uh, that's a great place for commercial.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? We will go out of public hearing. Any kind of comments or additional questions from the commissioners? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. And this is for the, uh, change of the general plan only, not the zoning.
I'll make a motion that we approve the general plan change for twenty-seven hundred north interchange.
Recommend approval.
Oh, yeah.
Recommend.
Yep. Sec- second.
Okay, we have a recommendation and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes. Uh, now we'll address the zoning part of that, uh, request.
Thank you. So if we can go back to the slide. So let's, oh, go back one real fast. So just to go over a few things, so the recommendation that was just made would place this area in a mixed use. Would place these areas in a commercial. So in our general plan, we have a list of zones that we usually, uh, deem to be corresponding or consistent to that designation. And so for instance, with the mixed use, we have a variety. We have high-density residential, which could be R three, R four, or, or the R five, excuse me. We have an urban village and then we have some commercial uses. Um, commercial designations are strictly commercial, um, corresponding zones. So if we jump to the next side, slide please, this is what's proposed. Um, once again, we're looking at appropriate uses around the interchange. We're looking at, uh, placing uses that are in need of the convenient access and visibility. And we're looking at trying to be consistent with the findings that came out of the twenty-seven hundred north study. And so what's proposed, if we jump to the next slide, here on the left, you have existing, and I apologize, um, we got these images from our GIS. And I created these ones on the left and I don't know why the background, uh, aerial is a different color. But, um, the main thing we need to focus on is just landmarks. And so for instance, you can see all of this is currently zoned light industrial. As well as this over here, you have some blue. And I apologize, I don't know why, uh, the different, the blue is the perf- uh, not the traditional, uh,
Public.
Publicity, excuse me. The darker gray is an I two. It's a medium, uh, industrial, slightly bigger uses than you would find in a light industrial. Generally, these are all enclosed within a building. Um, and so the proposed changes, you can see, starting from the west and working to the east. Over here along Main Street, we have a silver that would be, is proposed to be business park. Uh, this would remain industrial. Um, then we have around the interchange on the east side, we have an intersection that would be commercial as well as around the interchange that would be proposed to go to commercial from industrial. And then moving west or moving east across the I fifteen. As was mentioned, we have Canyon Creek Parkway. You can kind of see it. Comes up through the property here. Currently, that's all industrial. And so the top, uh, I believe Mr. Hall's property here is on the top as well as the, uh, Schwartz property. Proposal is C two, so strictly commercial and then the, the BP zone. Um, as was mentioned with the general plan, we have a variety of options we can look at. This was the highest, uh, as far as the vision goes. Um, but there's definitely opportunities to, to discuss other, other opinions. Any questions on this proposal?
Is there already industrial in the I two? Is there already stuff built in this?
Yes, if we go to the interactive map, please, Mike, we've got storage units. I believe the concrete batch plant, we're right over here. We've got two separate storage facilities and then we've got, uh, Jeff Parsons?
Yeah.
Yeah, the concrete batch plant.
Okay, and if you go back to the other slide, the previous one, um, is, where's the hos- is the hospital?
Hospital's just off the screen. So if we go back to the interactive map, sorry.
About where you're at.
Here's the hospital. Here's the hospital right here.
Okay.
So we're looking pretty much here and north on this east side of I fifteen.
So it would be just extending the same kind of thing as what's starting from, like extending the same kind of use.
The hospital. Complementary to the hospital.
Right.
Correct.
Hospital and businesses that are around the hospital and south of the hospital.
And it importantly removes the right of anyone to submit under the industrial zone. Uh, they wouldn't have the permitted uses of the industrial zone.
Correct.
Which is definitely inconsistent with the general plan amendment we just recommended that we passed.
That makes sense. Okay.
Okay, any questions for staff? Thank you.
Thank you. This is a, uh, public hearing as well. So we'll go into public hearing with the same aforementioned, uh, rules. So anyone that would like to come up and speak to the issue of the zoning, you're welcome to come up.
I did warn you, I'll be back.
One bad penny.
You got a bad feeling like it.
State your name again.
My name is Andy Spencer with Woodbury Corporation. Uh, and, uh, as you know, uh, we currently, uh, along with WPI, uh, are working on the Canyon Creek Commercial Center. And so, uh, I personally spend a lot of time here in the city. Uh, so much so that, uh, you know, staff at times tease me, teases me where my office is. Uh, other times that they'd, uh, you know, say, boy, you're here too much. But, uh, we love working in Spanish Fork. We love, uh, what we've been able to accomplish together with the city. And we're, we're very proud of how things are developing. Mike, I wonder, could I ask that you go back to the interactive map for just a minute? Just because it simply shows a greater corridor. We, along with the city, uh, and cities in this case, because we've got such an interesting interaction of the planning zones. Uh, you've basically got Spanish Fork, uh, right here and then you're surrounded, uh, by Springville's annexation declaration, uh, up in this area. And we're, we're looking forward very much as the cities are, uh, towards the new interchange coming. And, uh, I, I, you know, I don't know if you're aware, but the, the roadway has been funded to, uh, build the roadway, uh, to its full capacity, all the way, uh, to fifty-one, along with the overpass that you've mentioned there that is funded. And so we are looking at this, uh, in conjunction with the major landlords. We're here this evening with the Schwartz family, but we're also working with the Williams family, uh, who are right, this property right in this area. Aren't, they're in Spanish Fork's annexation declaration area. Um, they're not yet annexed. Uh, we're also working with the Crandall family, uh, here in this area. And we're working with both cities. Uh, and, and, uh, we're working towards a cohesive planning area that is the areas that are adjacent to twenty-seven hundred north there because we're looking at it much like the city is tonight as, you know, that area is going to evolve. It's going to change as, as, as those improvements come on. Um, so as we look at this effort, we're supportive of what the, the city's, uh, doing here in that we're looking toward, towards the future. Um, Brandon mentioned that in the city's zoning, for your mixed use zoning, there's a few different possibilities. What, what, uh, we're in favor of at this point is the urban village, uh, zoning possibility in lieu of the business park. We feel it still fits the business, the, uh, mixed use, uh, characteristics. But we think it also, uh, looks a little bit more towards, uh, what we might look at in the future. We, we feel that collectively, uh, we'll all be having a little more discussion on this area in, in the coming next couple of years as we look towards these improvements. And we feel like the, uh, urban village puts us a little bit closer to the uses that, uh, that we think we'll see there. Rather than just the business park, uh, the urban village has got a little bit more of a wider catalog of uses, if you will. Still within the mixed use category. And, and we really feel like that's a closer fit to where this area is going to land. Still within that idea of, of increasing, uh, the potential for the land, increasing, you know, the possibility, which is what the city's really trying to do with this is, hey, let's be proactive and, and let's, let's steer this. That's what we do when we plan, right? We're proactive and we, we steer, you know, try to make the best as soon as we can to try and help the best land uses eventuate. Um, so we're very supportive of that. Uh, just as we've talked about it with the family. Uh, we feel like the urban, the, uh, urban village commercial is a designation that, uh, puts us in a little, the, maybe a, a little next step, uh, ahead of where maybe just the business park and, and its limitations are. We really see that this area and this collective area, um, just has amazing potential for, for what it can be for the city of Spanish Fork and for the surrounding communities. Uh, we're very excited about that. But we would ask that you, that you consider that zone, um, still fitting within, like I said, the, the, the mixed use concept, what the city's seeing there, but, but maybe a little more, uh, possibility. Uh, because we feel like this area is filled with potential for just great things. So appreciate your, your, uh, allowing me a little time. I'm happy to answer any questions.
One question.
Yeah, please.
So your concern isn't so much staying the industrial, you're just thinking the zoning that changes to, you'd prefer it to be UVC instead of the business park?
C two, whereas had BP on the map, we just prefer that said C dash UV.
Right.
Uh, so, yeah, on the right hand there, whoops, let me use the pointer. Right in this area, what we would request is that you consider, uh, you know, the urban village commercial.
Cause as a, you feel the UVC has a slightly better purpose what you have intended there.
Right, right. We feel like it's still in harmony with what the city conceived in the planning study, which was a mixed use. Uh, you know, the city's planning, so you can see the mixed use, but we feel like the catalog of uses that are available in the, in the urban village commercial, uh, are a little bit
Sure.
more, uh, all-encompassing than just the business park.
But we, you have no intentions of, for like, the, the I two zoning going away does not affect, you, you, you're wanting that.
You're with them changing, uh, from the I, I one, I two zone.
Right.
Yeah, they're, they're, we're okay. We're, we're all working collectively to find this area towards something that's probably, uh, at its highest and best use a, a little bit more progressive than the industrial.
So Andy, what I'm kind of getting from you is, is that you would like to put, uh, some residential in there and utilize that zoning to achieve that mixed use. Uh, to put in some high den- higher density housing in the area as well as, uh,
Yeah, you, you look at the catalog of uses, big multifamily is there, but you also, you still have office uses. But you've got restaurants, you've got retail uses. It, it, the, uh, the urban village commercial appears, uh, at the outset to us to be a little more all-encompassing mixed use than, than just the business park.
So could you show us on the map where the mayor's steakhouse is going to go?
I tell you what, when we get to the mayor's steakhouse, we're gonna bring in a big old banner and it's gonna say, you know, right on top of the name of the steakhouse, whatever it may be, it's also, it's also gonna say underneath the mayor's steakhouse, right there.
There you go.
So Mike just asked this question. Dave or Brandon, is, is residential really the only difference between the two as we look at the two?
Well, business park is what you're trying to compare it to. C two is not.
Yeah, we're not, we're okay with the C two. We like the C two portion.
It's the B, it's the business park.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
If you go back to the slide. So we'd, we'd be happy to talk through, uh, with the Schwartz family and with, uh, Andy, a potential concept for the urban village commercial zone. Um, my initial reaction would be if we took action tonight on the property, which we advised, instead of the BP, put an RR in place so that that way we take the step from going away from the industrial and we place it in a holding zone, which would allow the existing uses to continue. That way the applicant and the owner can come to the city and maybe we can come back to the planning commission at a later date with a concept, get feedback and direction from you and then follow that up with a rezoning at that time.
Cause the desire is to remove the I two so we don't have something going in there that, that messes up the general plan in the future.
And what that does as well is it's clear that it's our intention of entertaining something for that spot. Rather than if we passed it as BP, it looks like that's, that's what we want.
I have a question. What's the difference between our mixed use zone and our urban village commercial?
Now, we don't have a mixed use zone.
What, the blue, that blue?
Our general plan.
General plan designation.
Uh-huh.
And so.
Yeah, go to BP. Go to BP.
If you jump to
The only.
The zoning, okay.
So that's the general plan designation now as a zone.
Me as well. And that is if Woodbury backs out, they're left with a zoning of RR. And that's not, that's not what we want either.
In some ways BP would be.
It just wouldn't now for housing.
Right, these are great, great questions.
Let me just, to your point, Brandon, our suggestion, that, and having heard, uh, the, the way that Mr. Spencer described things, I really think using what is our holding zone, the rural residential zone, to accomplish what they want to do, to give them an opportunity to go through the process that we've required everybody to go through before a property is zoned for development. I think that's the most appropriate. So going with rural residential zoning versus the business park on the east side of I fifteen, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Uh, let me, let me get, throw something out there though, is, uh, if Woodbury backs out, then, uh, these property owners have a rural residential zoning instead of a business park zoning.
Which would, it'd be the same process though. It'd just be a holding zone until another developer approached them to develop it in something else and would.
The next owner could make the same application as what they are going to make.
That's true.
And even if it was a temporary lull with the interchange coming on in two and a half years, I think they'll definitely see.
Oh, yeah. It'd be a lot of interest.
So Andy, how do you feel about that before we go?
We could prefer to table it. Dude, I'm sorry, I gotta turn the mic. I apologize. I gotta, no, it's fine here. You know, we're not in a huge rush, you know, and we understand what the city's trying to do and we appreciate what's, what the goal is. Um, but, uh, we don't have any problem with this discussion being tabled. What I, what my concern is with the rural residential is you're really downzoning it from what it is tonight. And that's not where we came thinking we were gonna land. Now, we understand that the city's trying to proactively change the zone um, to something that's, uh, a little more progressive. And in that regard, we're very favorable towards that. But, uh, you know, I hate to, you, you know, you've indicated, Joseph, what if things fall apart? You know, in negotiations, et cetera. I hate to have, uh, the Schwartz family end up with a rural residential that, you know, in a value, you've been downzoned. Uh, and they, they didn't come here tonight thinking they were gonna get downzoned.
I don't think that's appropriate. That's accurate though. They still have a, a prime piece of real estate. The developer like you can easily come in, make an application to have it changed. It's just a holding zone.
What I'm saying is we're, we're fine to wait. We would be fine to wait and say, hey, let, let's, let's pass the other areas that you're looking at. You, you have the applicants. You have the applicants right here, they represent the family, they're not going anywhere, and we're fine to take another couple of weeks to talk about things.
From my standpoint, I wouldn't want to keep it as an I-1, though, because that allows a conforming use to come in
Sure.
without presenting before the city, before us.
Yeah.
You may be stuck.
So I think that should change to something, knowing that the CUV standard can be applied later on. Like you've said several times, this is going to change a lot in the next five to 10 years.
And we know we'll be back here. What I'm saying is that you have the likely applicants for here, and they don't have anybody that's going to run in in the next two weeks, right? So I'm not going to make one, well, you know.
But Andy, you're not going to apply in the next two weeks, though, with some comprehensive master plan, are you?
No, no, we're not going to, but nor are they. They don't have anybody that they're ready to sell to that's going to run in and apply, right?
No one's going to come and put a concrete plant on their land.
Right, right. So I'm just saying, give us...
But that's just the problem in and of itself is because zone changes like that that are outside of just the general plan and what this zone is, is meant for consideration upon an actual site plan and a master plan.
Right.
So that's the city's process, and that's what we're talking about.
Totally understand the process, I understand.
Just a second, just.
Yeah, please, please. I don't need to hold the mic.
I agree, we didn't necessarily come here with the idea of downzoning the property, and we think the business park is a fairly liberal change, you know, really. That has been staff since the beginning. Now, in terms of things that concern us, we do not upzone property. We do not upzone property, at least I can't recall a time when we've done that, without having people gone to great lengths to answer a lot of questions that we feel need to be answered before that process happens. When I say upzone, I mean add rights, develop a potential to a property via a legislative process, changing a zoning district, like certainly going to the commercial urban village zone would. So that would run contrary to processes that predate me and Spanish Fork. Now, if the applicant, property owner, Mr. Spencer, or anybody wants to initiate the process of answering the questions that are associated with that type of a zone change, to do something that's consistent with the vision plan that you've seen for the area and so forth, I don't think that's premature to start on that process, but all that we're here tonight to do is to try to keep in mind that on Monday, a new facility, 250,000 square feet of hospital was opened, other people are making tremendous investments in the area and so forth, and we don't think it makes any sense to leave industrial zoning on that Canyon Creek corridor. So I do think there are a lot of options. I don't understand the pushback at all that we're getting with what I think is a really benign proposal that we brought forth and that actually is coming at the direction of the planning commission, but, again, that's just a little bit more in terms of the typical process on upzoning property and how we operate.
Dave, can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
So if we did, if we were to change the zone to business park tonight, and the Schwartz family came with a master plan development for that area, which included some residential, at that point, we could make that change within that same motion where we wouldn't have to do a whole bunch of legwork, but it's already in that similar use, but just it's a one-step zone change. Would that be something that would be normal in this type of situation? Is that something that the city would be, look favorable upon?
100%, yeah. I think in terms of, it could happen, and that'd be customary with our process, I guess. And would we support somebody bringing forth a plan that's consistent, again, with the 2700 North vision, where frankly, it is a kind of a wide-open opportunity. It could be business park, you know, professional office buildings, different things like that. It could be a combination of that and residential, it could be retail, it could be a lot of different things, but I don't mean to put Commissioner Ernest on the spot, but you're aware of the amount of legwork that we require people to go through if properties are upzoned. You know, typically, it's significant, and that's the one thing that I guess I'm protective of, because I know what happens legally when zoning changes and what the city gives up, so.
Any more public comments?
We're still in public hearing, you want to close that, or?
Yeah, we'll close the public hearing now and open it to comments from the commissioners.
So I have some thoughts on this. As far as the business park designation, I like the idea of zoning it the business park designation and encouraging Woodbury to present a comprehensive plan for the area. I will also tell you, Andy, for what it's worth, I've said this actually a few times in the last few months, I am such a fan of large-scale master plan developments because it provides opportunity for any of the, anyone who's going to move in there, they know exactly what they're getting. It's planned, there's no surprises if they do their due diligence as far as going and being a member of that part of the community, and I think it's, typically, it's a major win for the city, and it's a win for everyone who lives in that region, that of what you're talking about. So I encourage you to actually get together an application and go through the process that the city has for vetting a large-scale master plan development. From experience, like Dave said, it's an opportunity for the city to vet the project and our staff, who are professionals, to go through that site plan and look at what works and what doesn't work before they will recommend that a zone change occurs to urban village or R4 or whatever that Andy and the Schwartzes want, which I will tell you, I mean, this is all on the record, I am hopeful that you will come back, because I would like to see it, and I would, I hope that the city, the city's perspective is that we want to entertain that. That's my perspective, for the record, that I, my opinion is, we zone it BP, we incorporate the other zones, this is a major benefit to the city to not have industrial zoning. I also like the BP zoning designation for a lot of reasons, and I like that the Woodbury would need to come to the city with the master plan development before entertaining a different zone. That's my opinion.
Well, I think the BP zoning is a good placeholder, but doesn't limit what the property owners can do with the property, right? Like, it's in lines with what they're trying to accomplish already with just a slight tweak, but then it gives, like you said, the city the opportunity to vet through that first.
I'm kind of leaning towards staying with the BP as we are now, and I do understand that you don't want to downzone. But by the same token, it's not the city's responsibility or your responsibility to zone up. You know, as soon as you go to the other zone that you're talking about, that area that we were talking about to the east that is owned by those guys, that's going to, that's going to put that land, that land will go up in value as well, and eventually that will happen, whether it is Woodbury or somebody else that comes with that proposal. So I like what Joseph said, you know? We're not closing any doors, but we're trying, we're trying to, well, we're trying to make sure that nothing happens in this area that would affect Schwartzes or anybody else's property in that area. That's not what the city wants. I don't think anybody wants anything industrial in there. And so you can always come back, even though this may be BP, and you can come back and, you know, go through the same process that we have tonight. I just don't, I don't feel comfortable with anything other than what was proposed tonight for us to recommend to the city at this time. If you would rather just pull it, well, you take the chance that somebody's going to come in and do something that we, none of us really want. This is the current zoning, so I don't feel good about leaving that. And so that's my feelings as far as the way I see it.
The city's not going to pull it.
Yeah, I think that this benefits everybody, you know, with the BP designation now, and, you know, if you feel the need to change that, let's have it. But right now, I don't think you're prepared to do any kind of major project there and have, you know, a large-scale development proposed.
I understand that, and I agree with that, but our concern also is, is it more difficult to make changes once these zoning designations have been approved? Is it even much more difficult to get them changed back?
Not at all.
Nope.
It'd be a typical process.
To your point, it's, without knowing what's going to go there, that's why it's so difficult. We want to see a plan, so it becomes, in my opinion, it becomes much more realistic when there's a plan in place, that's then there's an ask for the zone change that coincides with the plan. That's why, that's why it's not working tonight for that ask.
Okay, if there's no more comments or any more questions, I would entertain a motion.
Go ahead, Tom.
Can I do this one?
Yes, sir.
Do I get my chance tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'd like to make a recommendation, the proposed zone change, as presented by staff of the 2700 North Interchange, be, recommend that the zoning be approved to council, following the staff's findings and conditions.
Second.
You have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes as?
I'm excited to see what you guys come up with. Sounds cool, sounds really cool.
I hope you come back quickly as well, because I know 2024, with how the scale you just talked about, you, yeah, it's 20, it's going to come up quick.
As I say, you don't want to hear from us.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for coming and being a part of the process. Encourage you to keep.
On the report.
I think that the city could provide that for you if you'd like.
I don't know how to find it. Yeah, it's in the report.
It's in the staff report.
Aren't a lot of these maps, interactive maps on this?
It's the planning commission portal for the agenda, it has all the staff reports.
On a cattle ranch, that'd be a great place for a steakhouse.
I like it.
Okay, we'll go move on to the next item, which is also a public hearing as well.
Yes, I appreciate that. We do have a couple more items, and so feel free at your convenience, schedule a break, otherwise we'll keep plowing through them.
Let's plow through right now.
The next one, if we can advance the slide, please.
Yeah.
This is referred to as the MTEC Zone Change Approval Request. This is just a follow-up to some earlier action that's been taken. If you recall, a couple of months back, we coordinated with the facility as far as amending some definitions, describing what their use is. That made them more comfortable with this next step, which is changing the zoning from BP to public facility, and part of that stemmed from conversations that were had relating to earlier development activity on Del Monte. So there were some concern, concerns raised by some of the joint property owners and residents in the area as far as what uses might they anticipate in the future. And so with the findings for this proposal, which is once again, if we jump to the next slide, so on the left, you can see the existing zoning, business park extends all the way up to 1100 South, which is just adjacent to ALA, and so all of this property in the BP would be changed to public facilities, and as mentioned in the findings, it's more consistent with the current land uses here on the property, as well as that would help create a public process. So in the future, if there was a request for a different land use or zoning, it would come through a public process that would involve the neighborhood, would involve the city, it would involve the planning commission. Any questions on this proposal?
Have you considered urban village zoning for that location?
No.
Oh, okay.
Couldn't resist.
I couldn't resist.
I think it's a good move. We've talked a little bit about this and the reasons for the zone change and stuff.
Is there anybody from the Landowners that are having their zoning changed that's going to talk about their feelings towards this?
Yeah, this is a public hearing.
Well, not yet.
Dave's been in touch with the director of MTEC. Yeah, so just to run a slow, the state. That's a good, maybe things to touch on really quickly. Clay Christiansen is the administrator of MTEC, you know, the whole Applied Technology College, just, I'm sorry, not just our campus here. We talked four or five months ago about this. He referred kind of my questions about it to somebody at the State Attorney General's Office, which I now know is just kind of how they operate, you know, whenever something like this is proposed. As a result of some conversations that I had with that gentleman, we actually changed the language of the public facility zone. Wouldn't be surprised if you don't remember it, it was a pretty subtle change, but it made it very clear that institutions of higher learning or something like that are a permitted use in the public facility zone, which was the only concern that the attorney had with the concept, and we haven't had really any correspondence since. They said, yes, we're comfortable with that language, so. And it's, this is just limited to property of the zone by the state college, so.
And all the existing uses match that zoning, public facility?
Exactly, which is really, and I appreciate the...
Not always the case. It's like a hand in a glove this time.
And really what this does is it just, it ensures the neighborhood that if the use changes, there's going to be a process that they'd be able to participate in.
Was ALA already part of this, or did, ALA is included in this change?
That is currently zoned public facilities.
It is already?
That was a change we made two years ago. Yeah, it was done.
Okay, ready? So this is a public hearing, and we will enter into that with the same rules as we've had before. Is there anyone that would like to come before the commission and discuss this change? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions or comments, discussion from the commissioners? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, let the proposed zone change be recommended for approval based on staff's findings.
Second? You have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, our next item is another, another zone change.
Yeah, this is the Fritzi zoning map amendment. If we jump to the next slide, please. So we're looking at roughly 28 acres here on the left, you see the existing zoning. It's a couple of parcels that are all zoned I-1, I think there's a little portion of it that's zoned RR. The proposal tonight would be to, the request is to amend the zoning for this area from the I-1 to the RR zone. This has been through the DRC, discussed at length. The city doesn't see a reason to delay the change in this area. We do have, as you're aware, we've got the development proposal that will be coming soon to you from Sun Rock as they move their current operations to a different location within the city. Their zoning is already in place, they had a master plan that was approved maybe four, five years ago. They've since amended that layout, the design will be coming back for you, before you. And so the concern is the change would be more consistent with the general plan designation for the area, which is low-density residential, and so the city would like to see that change made as this project comes forward.
Very good.
Any questions on this one?
So the industrial uses that are happening in this building now can stay unless...
They'd be considered conforming, and they could stay.
Unless they change what they want to do? And then is this, is there a business right here right now?
No, I believe that's just the entrance to the Sun Rock property.
Yes.
I believe this was a past request from Sun Rock to hold that. City requirement. Oh, a city requirement with the original design and layout of the residential subdivision.
And this is, and this is Del Monte?
Yes.
Right here?
Yeah, this is Del Monte here, Calpak here, Main Street over here.
And over here is there existing commercial?
Yes, those are some existing businesses on Main Street, just south of the Wetlands Bank.
Is that where then there's a reception center?
No. No, that's being built.
Oh, that's up here.
Further, it's north of Arrowhead where it connects into Main Street.
Oh, where the trail goes underneath the road?
Correct, it's north of that.
Okay.
That's Butler's.
That's Butler's.
Okay.
Been a car dealership there at one time. Been a car dealership there at one time, different things. Butler's.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. This is.
Oh, wait. My other question is, what's the general plan for that area?
Low density residential.
Okay, thank you.
Um, there are a few different designations when you land on Main Street. We can pull that up if you'd like, but there's higher intensity uses proposed in the general plan along Main Street.
Along Main, okay.
Okay. Any other questions before we go into public hearing? If not, we'll go into public hearing with the same rules that we've discussed before. Is there anyone here that would like to come to the microphone and participate in the public hearing? If not, we'll go out of public hearing. Is there any further discussion or comments from the commissioners? Pretty straightforward.
What's the discussion been with the current owners of the that property?
I honestly feel like we're kind of all over the place with the with the owner of the property like we have been for a long time. Sometimes we hear that they're ready to develop all of their property, which incidentally, the owner owns a property on both sides of Main Street in the area, quite a bit of land altogether. Occasionally, we'll hear that they're ready to discontinue the use of the building and remove it and have the site developed residential. And then that changes back to just wanting to maintain the status quo. I really feel like it's been difficult to keep track of what they'd like to do, which is part of what has me nervous about keeping the industrial zoning in place, frankly. That's largely why we're here tonight with this with this proposal. I will say, though, we have seen concept plans. We just met with somebody representing the developer on Monday, I think it was, maybe Tuesday, that showed all of their property being developed as one cohesive master plan development. The density might need to be worked on a little bit, but almost entirely consistent with the general plan. Incidentally, I think this is probably close to about as good of a time to, you know, from a market perspective, to contemplate that change is what we might ever see. It's hard for me to imagine the the market for residential property, you know, multifamily property being stronger than it is right now, but who knows?
Thank you.
But nothing we're doing here would would impact what he's planning on doing then.
Just prevents the industrial from coming in.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that the proposed zone change for the Fritzy property be recommended following staff's findings and conditions.
I'll second.
You have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next.
On the this request, we will table the next item and move it to the title.
I'm going to accuse myself on this.
I got the wrong message.
Okay, this is the Johnson.
Almost don't want Commissioner Ernst sitting behind me.
He just he just recused himself from the podium.
Yeah, so Joseph, Commissioner Ernst is the.
Joseph now, let's be clear.
It's Mr. Mr. Ernst.
Joseph is the applicant for this item, so he, as required, recused himself from from the action on this request. The applicant has titled this the Johnson four hundred east zone change. What we're looking at, this is the applicant's proposal. To orient ourselves, we've got a thousand north across the top of the screen. We've got the existing Quik Quack Car Wash. And then to the south, outlined in black, is the area that the applicant's requesting to rezone from R one six to a C two commercial. And so as you can see, that would include the house on the corner. And the lot, I believe there's a lot in between the two corner lots that would also be changed. So if we jump to the next slide. And that pretty much does what we just described. I think I have one more. Oh, go back, sorry. Let's pull up the staff report if you don't mind. So the applicant provided us some exhibits explaining the intent and the reason for the rezone. And it becomes pretty apparent once we see the site plan in a nutshell. Keep going. Right there. If we can zoom in on this slide. You can see the existing limits of the car wash are highlighted by a beautiful green wall. Um, this is the south end of, this is the exit of the tunnel. Uh, my understanding is the wall was installed in order to comply with the city's regulations as far as noise emitting from the end of the tunnel. And so as you can see, the applicant would like to relocate the driveway further south, which will give more stacking, more queuing. They're also going to make some adjustments to the north of the building to improve the turning radius. And I'll let Joseph speak to some of the internal changes. And so if we go back to the exhibit that shows the rezone area, you can see some existing fence lines that kind of match up with where the new southern border would be. Questions up to this point?
I think we have the applicant here, so.
We got a presentation by the applicant. We'll give Mike a second to queue it up.
This is a long presentation from the applicant.
I would assume so.
Three minutes is customary. He's long winded.
Sorry, well, Mike's pointing it up.
So in my opinion. So in my opinion, if you look at the staff report, we just highlighted a couple of findings and then key issues that as needed can be talked through. Thank you.
Let's just stay on the site plan for now. Joseph Ernest, applicant. We'll just stay on the site. Oh, yeah, that that's even better. That's good. Yeah, perfect. So the car wash as it is, it has a it has a ninety four foot tunnel. And the bigger the bigger Quik Quack Car Washes have a hundred and fourteen foot tunnel customarily and more turning radius. So the idea is what what Brandon said is to increase the turning radius, or cut into the building on the north side and bring it back further to the south. So the new northern boundary of the tunnel will be further to the south. And then it's going to extend further to the south as well. Uh, one of the things that we're doing in an effort on our own to significantly mitigate the sound is we're extending the tunnel an additional ten feet. So our our big tunnels are a hundred and fourteen feet, but we're actually have this one be a hundred and twenty four feet. And it's going to extend ten feet beyond the last air blower. And the air blowers are the main culprit for sound is the moment the the air hits the car, that's when the decibels increase the most. Uh, it's the vacuums are quiet. On the west side, they're not an issue at all. So we'll have ten feet of space from the the car being done, being dried off to exiting the tunnel. In addition, we're going to narrow the exit width and shorten the exit as well. So it'll be shorter and more narrow to further decrease the sound escaping out of the tunnel exit. We're also going to be moving that sound wall. We're proposing that we'll move the sound wall to the south. The Fenway Park Left Field, Green Monster, that's moving to the south, again, for the for the south. So this is a, we're going to kill two birds with one stone. We're going to have a better car wash experience and we're going to decrease the sound that's leaving the site. In addition, we're moving the exit further to the south. We do, we have had some backup backup on the four hundred east. So this is a big deal for, from my perspective, it's a good thing for the city. It's a good thing for us too, because we don't want to be the reason cars back up on the four hundred east. That's not good. All right, let's let me show you the zoning. Well, let's go to the general plan. Go to zoning and general plan maps. Go to the zone, uh, general plan map, if you wouldn't mind. It's not supposed to be black.
That tunnel's dark.
Oh, come on. Try the zoning map. It's a PNG file. Oh, 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 yeah, or that one worked. Okay, good. They both worked. So general plan, you can see it's mixed use. So actually, I might pull up the survey because it'll with these. And then it'll explain to them why we're doing this at all, why we need to do the general zoning.
Or survey with these?
Yeah, just click on that survey and I'll show them what we're doing here. It's also help if any of the publics are curious. So right now, like they said, we have this parcel and then there's a parcel.
So I'm trying to go.
You're good, you're good. So what's going to end up happening is one, two, three parcels. This, we're we're under contract to purchase this whole thing. And this parcel is going to extend to right here. So this, from here upward will be one parcel and from here downward will be one parcel. So that parcel's outline will be like so. And because, and you can go back to the general plan and the zoning map. Show those if you would. So because it's zone, it's a general plan mixed use and the current zoning is C two, we need the 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 part of the car wash extension to also be C two, to be compliant. And then because I think it's intimidating for applicants sometimes to come here, I thought that we would request that that lot to the south be consistent with the general plan as well. And the idea here is so that it's currently the Johnson residence. The idea here is if it's zoned C two as well, that it it can stay a residence. But if someone else buys it or if the Johnsons wanted to, or or if we we're buying it or we're going to sell it, just so you know, that's our intention to sell it. Whoever buys it from us could keep it as a residence or they could use any of these C two uses. It just extend, it expands their options. It doesn't limit their options. And the reason, the reason as the applicant, I thought C two is because if you look here at the zoning map, that's the current site, that red star. R three is next door. This is all R one six and this is all C two. So if it is C one, it'll be the first C one. But I'll tell you, as the applicant, we're good either way. I'm just trying to give the next owner options. We're good if it's C one, we're good if it's C two. But again, it just, this is what's happening here in this area. And then I'm also noticing in this area, there's offices expanding in these arteries. And there's medical offices, dental offices. I've noticed a physical therapy, things like that. It seems, it seems to make sense. Um, I'd also like to, if there's any public comments, save save some time to address those with the commission's consent.
One comment that I felt to mention is the DRC did look at the site and recommended a C two for the corner house.
C two. Makes sense.
I appreciate your consideration. We're excited to make the car wash better.
Thank you, Joseph. Well, this is, is there any questions before we go into public public hearing? This is a public hearing and so it'll be conducted under the same rules that we've mentioned. Uh, so we will open the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public that would like to come forward? State your name and.
My name is Janet Davies. And the property you were talking about is north of my home and east of my home. So as I understand it.
North and east?
Yeah, that's my house right there. This white outline right there.
Okay.
That's my house.
Okay.
Oh, I'm glad you're here. I wondered.
We we have lived there for over fifty years and then the car wash from there, it takes over. And it is so noisy and there's so much congestion there. They said, oh, it's going to be quiet. You'll never hear it. But that's not true. We have so much noise coming from that car wash, we can't even enjoy our backyard. And if they extend it farther south, it'll be right on our property line. And we don't want that coming farther into our yard. It's not fair that we have to live with something like that where we've been there over fifty years. And then on the east, if they go clear around and have something there on the east of our home, they'll be surrounding our home with noise and congestion that we don't want. And they said when they first built, oh, you won't hear it. It won't be that noisy. But it is horrible, especially when they start at six o'clock in the morning and they're banging on something, I don't know what it is, and wake us up before they even open. And it's just not fair. So I oppose the zoning change. It should stay residential like it was intended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Sure.
My name is Brad Davies. I'm her son. And just wanted to point out that what's drawn as a property boundary is not accurate. The fence line is actually across here. This is my parents' fence. That's the final fence right now that belongs to them. So this is inaccurate.
So this, I'd be happy to.
Brandon, I'll just plug in the conversation. We we've talked a little about this issue.
Oh, you're not getting mad at me?
No, sorry. Sorry. The zone change doesn't need to follow. The zone change doesn't follow what we think. This is an option you mentioned.
So what Director Anderson's referring to is in city code, we actually do have a procedure as far as where we determine zoning lines to apply. Generally, it's property lines, but there's a list of options as well. Um, this is something that Joseph and I actually talked about. And I did some research independent of what Joseph discovered and I'll let him speak to it. But the parcel outlines, as you see them now, have remained since at least nineteen seventy six. You can go online to the county's website and do an abstract search yourself or you can go to a title company. And so that's something that I raised to Joseph to look into. And I think he'd be happy to speak to that. But my findings were that the description and the lengths and dimensions that are associated with the county's map that you're looking at right now, because we we pull the county parcel data to use in our interactive map. Um, that matches up, hasn't changed. As Mrs. Davies said, they've lived there and owned it for a long time and it hasn't changed other than I believe a recent fence line agreement on the east side.
On the east side?
Yes.
With the Johnsons?
Between the houses.
So you're saying, I mean, you're saying legally by the county, it's not the fence line. They're they're showing it as it's depicted.
I wouldn't go as far as to say legally, but just.
Okay, as is according to county records.
Yep.
We have to put it forward. And we don't want it, honestly.
That's not, yeah.
At all.
That's not right.
Property lines used and things like that. And we would not suggest that we're the experts.
Right.
Okay. Did Mr. Davies have any more comments?
Are there any other comments?
I think, so I mean, just to be clear and I'm just going to talk about options as I see them and what I understand, you know, really what I think the ultimate goal that the Quik Quack Car Wash folks have, which is to expand their site. And I think there's more to it than just that, but the idea that they would move the fence from here to here to be able to accommodate all of the things that Mr. Ernest talked about that I think are good. I think reducing the likelihood that we will have vehicles stacking on to Fourth East is a good thing. I think that with an additional ten feet of building enclosure, the amount of sound that's emitted from the operation will go down. So in all honesty, I do think those are good things. Now, whether or not what if you went, as I see it here, if you went to the Davies home and went in your backyard, you wouldn't absolutely feel like this is their property. No doubt about it. I mean, I think that's that's just sort of matter of fact. Now, I also think that it makes good sense to change the zoning of of this property here right now, you know, while this is being consumed. That's consistent with the general plan. Typically, when we have an opportunity to zone a property for non-residential uses, we like to take that opportunity. So whether it's C one or C two on the corner, I think this is an appropriate time for that. And now I'm just interjecting my opinion, but if this area here were simply left out of the zone change, with the idea, of course, that the zoning of that property could be changed in the future. But for now, if if we forward that. Uh, but for now, if, if we forward that, uh, to just leave that as is, I don't know if that would at all help the Davies' family feel more comfortable. But, um, I certainly can understand why they'd be concerned about having the zone change extended down into, into what would feel like their yard. And I say that not at all wanting to, to try to guess, you know, what, uh, the actual ownership there is and that type of thing. Does that make sense?
Sure. Um, noise ordinance, so, the, the Davies' complaint is noise, or one of, their complaints is noise. What is SmashFolks' noise ordinance? And does the car wash comply with that now? If it doesn't, uh, either way I'd like to know. And then to the applicant Joseph, your other operations, what is the decibels coming out of those that we could compare noise that it is now to what it will be when the changes are done? Do you, can we, can we talk about that for a minute?
Yeah.
Okay.
And in addition to that, is there any other noise suppression other than the length of the tunnel and the narrowing of the opening? You know, are there any baffling that's going to take place there or anything like that?
What about Fenway fence?
And the fence, you know, the height and the-
Yeah.
Well, the stuff-
The thickness.
I think before we go forward with this, uh, are we out of public hearing?
No, I believe we're still open.
We are still open. Uh, shall we go ahead and close the public hearing and have the discussion?
There's a comment.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
What, what time of day does the noise ordinance begin? So their op- hours of operation are seven AM, um, but what about six AM? If, if they could wait till seven AM, that would be great. But why are they there at six AM and is that allowed?
Okay, that's a great question. Um, yeah, I guess let's go through this first. Which honestly, I don't know that this is gonna mean a lot, you know, we're talking about decibels. Unless you're in the weeds, right, and you know what these levels are. So maybe you talk more about timing. But I will say that there are noise levels that are compliant with our noise ordinance and noise levels that are not. Um, and noise is a funny thing, you know, it's kind of like the Richter scale in terms of-
Can you put that table back up?
Yes.
Earthquakes here.
I'm gonna start just talking about the timing.
Yeah.
Which I-
That one please.
So, probably Brandon can speak to this better than I can. I last looked at this when we were talking about this project before.
That permitted stuff on the right's not in relation to-
Just to give you an idea.
Just the idea of what is what.
So decimal levels, if you can, you know, maybe, uh, just picture what some of those-
So commercial from six to nine is seventy, yeah, so you're-
And what is it coming out of the existing car wash?
We have.
Yeah, I have a lot of context for that when it's, when you guys want it checked.
And, and maybe Joseph, I'll just give kind of, kind of my recollection of the industry that we have here. But before that, um, this is reading a little bit differently than I thought it read. I thought we started at seven AM, went to nine PM. Brandon, can you help me with that? Am I missing something here?
Uh, looks like six.
I'm confusing it with the construction.
Yeah, construction.
I think, um, okay. And, this is for maybe Joseph and Brandon. Sixty-five decibels, that is the limit because it's a residential use adjacent, is that correct?
Is that-
Yeah.
Okay. So it's not the seventy, it's sixty-five decibels measured at the property line. That's the maximum. However, this is a really important thing to understand. That the noise levels are based on a continuous noise for two-minute intervals. Uh, that's how we measure it. So, you know, an isolated client here or there or that type of a thing, uh, can't exceed that decimal level. And not, uh, make it sort of violation of the ordinance.
I could be wrong, but the way I'm reading it, the commercial is the seventy.
Yeah, if, if it's commercial-
The paragraph.
If commercial, if it's commercial, it's seventy. If commercial, if it's residential, it's sixty-five at the boundary line. Is how we were tested.
So if you're, if you're standing with a, a, a decibel reader, on the other side of the green fence, right up against it, that's where you'd be taking that reading?
That's right, and that's what we did. We've actually just, alright, a bunch of context here. The, the green fence there, it's an actual sound wall. That we had BYU's sound department help us-
Design.
Figure out how to do it. So, and it's also, I think it's twelve feet tall. Uh, or it's either ten or twelve. We had to get a, a fence variance to have it that tall at the time. Uh, so we've gone through, we've gone through a, a lot of effort, um, to get it to be compliant with the current sound ordinance. Uh, this was a couple of years ago. I kinda had to become an expert on the sound ordinance here. Um, and it was a sixty-five decibel reading, uh, at that time, that we needed to comply with. And then, uh, to Pam's concerns about noise and congestion, we really think that's what we're addressing with the expansion. I mean, I, I can't see how it would get worse, uh, with the expansion. Congestion, if there's ever backup on four hundred east, that's gonna cause some congestion. Moving the access further away to the south is gonna alleviate that. Uh, it will definitely, uh, definitely help with that.
Sure.
Or hurt. And then, um, the sound stuff we're doing with the ten feet of additional space in the tunnel and then narrowing the exit. And in addition, moving the sound wall to the south boundary line, these are, these are, uh, this will dec- it will decrease it. Um, and even DRC actually thought about not having the sound wall because they thought that the, the other mitigation, the ten-foot of extension of tunnel and the narrowing exit would suffice, potentially. And I thought, well, we could just, we could see if it does and then add the sound wall, but we're just adding it. So, uh, uh, so, and then as far as Commissioner Menenhall, your comment about are there additional steps we could take? Now that we have that ten feet of additional space, yes, there are additional like baffling and sound mitigation efforts we could put in there if, as needed. Uh, either way, we would expect that we have to comply with the ordinance.
But you'd only do, do that if you are in exceedance of the ordinance.
At this point, that's what I would suggest. Given what we're already doing to decrease it.
Which is kind of the process that we went through before, just as an FYI.
Yeah, we did a lot, Dave and I became buddies on that one.
We, I think frankly, as the city, we had our eye on the wall. We were really worried about the vacuums, they're noisy. I had never been through, I had never been through a car wash like this before and didn't realize that there were big blowers that were loud and that type of a thing. So, yeah, I, I apologize that we, we did not focus on the right things. And originally, car wash was built without the wall. Um, and it took, it took quite a while to zero in on, I mean, there were several other mitigating things before the wall was built that were tried. Um, I can remember several times being out there with our police officer that measures sound and, uh, you know, trying to see if, if those different measures worked and nothing worked until the wall was built. Um, and that got us below that sixty-five decibel limit. So, um, uh, I have been in other car washes where there is space beyond the blowers. And, uh, if you, I don't know where some of those might be, if you're familiar with any in here, unless I can think of a part of Utah. But, if you go to those, um, it is noticeable that, um, you're not hearing the same thing even that you hear inside your car when you're going through. You know, the blowers are hammering you. So, I, I think this is effective, but maybe, maybe it's what you were asking about. I, I don't think we have necessarily great science either.
Well, but does, does the applicant, does Joseph have that? I mean, you run other operations that have this extension on them, you've, you've-
Wiggy wash has about a ten-foot extension past their blowers.
Uh, I'm not as familiar with that. We, we rare, in fact, I can't think of another, uh, site where we have an additional ten feet in the tunnel.
Oh, so you just have a, you have a longer facility, but not the additional ten feet?
Right.
Okay.
This is specific to mitigate the sound.
Okay.
This is unique for us.
I misunderstood your earlier statement. I thought, I thought some of your other longer tunnels had that ten feet.
No, our typical length of tunnel is a hundred fourteen feet. This one's gonna be a hundred twenty-four specifically to help with the sound.
Okay.
And then, uh, as far as the boundary issue, lightsaber? Uh, so, the exhibit I showed you earlier was actually the, the survey. So, we're just going out to survey in county records. And, um, I, I kinda just hate to hand to whoever next owns this, like an errant zoning area. I, I don't know, it just seems like spot zoning and it's not consistent with the general plan. And it doesn't actually affect, uh, anything as far as the current uses, doesn't, it doesn't affect anything. Uh, uh, it, I just think it's sloppy. I prefer you didn't do that. The next property owner would have a problem with that, I'm sure.
Thank you. Uh, we'll go out of public hearing now and I'll open, uh, the discussion. Or questions with the other commissioners?
There was a comment made that the vacuums are still a nuisance. I don't know, have those been measured, the sound ordinance on those? Or are they a problem?
Vacuums have never been a problem.
Except they're saying they are right now.
You're saying they are.
They don't like car washes.
It's not they are. The, the people that live in the apartments, you can put it apart.
We haven't had, we haven't measured- We haven't found that it exceeds sixty-five decibels even at that west property line. So they, they could be loud, um-
And sixty-five decibels is a piano result. So the, the road is, is loud. Uh, you have to differentiate between the road at thousand north and four hundred east as well, when you're doing something like that.
So I guess I'm just saying that compared to the blowers, the vacuums aren't as loud as, you know, the central vacuum.
I have a comment as it re- is it, uh, pertains to this request. Uh, and there are, there are two things that I would address with the Davies's is that it seems to me like the applicant is trying to mitigate the noise that he has there. Everything that he planned, everything that applicant plans to do is in effort to try to make this quieter for you. They're not trying to make it noisier. They're not trying to make it so that you have more traffic. They're trying to alleviate what's there now. And I support that because I think that'll make you guys' house better, as well as the surrounding neighborhood. Uh, the, uh, the issue of what to zone, uh, the Johnson's house, I think is probably an issue that you have a right to raise. But I think also that you have to be aware that, uh, from tenth north to ninth north is likely to be eaten up as you have an opportunity to sell property along there. Yeah, you know, the people that are gonna buy those homes are probably gonna have the same issues that you do. They may want to live in a, in a quieter area and not there. And besides that, you know, if it's commercial, they'll give you a higher price for that, which gives you a product that's more valuable. I cannot tell you that it's gonna be better. I can't tell you that you're gonna have a better experience there. But considering, you know, uh, how this area has gone to pot, you know, I don't know how you guys feel about that, but it's, it's ugly. I don't know if you have trouble with feral cats and other, you know, things there. But if somebody's gonna come in there and do something with that, I would say that almost anything is better than what's there now. House, on the other hand, I can't tell you. But it is a marketable piece of property. And, uh, we're already seeing, you know, some of that coming towards ninth north. So, um, that's just my comment.
If commercial does go here, they sell it and someone comes in, builds something, they would be required to build a fence here, correct?
Correct.
So, that would-
Masonry, right?
For that to be a masonry-
Six-foot masonry fence.
And I think that's important to bring up just because as neighbors, you wouldn't want to necessarily have that business right there by your side yard or, or whatever. And so I think that's important to know regardless.
Uh, my question is, is has, have, um, uh, Mrs. Davies, have you spoken with the car wash about the six AM banging to see what it is and see if they, if there's something they could do to be more sensitive to that time loudness? I always think the best way to solve problems is to go talk with a business- with a business owner about it.
Have you tried calling, talking about the sound related?
That happened.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and, and it's so painful when you've got development, that when you've got fifty years of encroachment and development coming in and the city's not the same as it was, that's just, that's really painful to your heritage and where you've come from. So I, I, I definitely, I definitely feel for you on that. And how come it's different for a city ordinance to be six AM versus seven AM with construction? Cause construction is louder generally?
I wonder, I honestly wonder.
I mean, seven seems like plenty early to-
I-
Start making noise.
Yeah, I wonder if it doesn't make some sense for us to look at that. I don't know what the history is. I don't think that's changed in probably decades.
Anyway, it seems like it might be more friendly to the neighbors that are starting to get a lot of commercial around them, but-
Very true, particularly along this corridor, I think what we're talking about right now is probably getting more and more of a issue.
Joseph, are you aware of what they may, that may be? Is it emptying garbage cans into the dumpster or something like that's banging loud or? You have any idea?
If they complained to the city, it, it means it was probably a long time ago. And I know we've since receiving complaints from them. I know they've been more sensitive to it. But I don't know why they'd be making noise at six AM. I'm racking my brain and they, we shouldn't be doing that. I don't know why we would. We don't open till seven AM anyway.
There's usually not anybody there at six, is there?
Now, I can't, I don't know. Maybe it was a single bang of a mechanic working on equipment once. I can't, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions, discussion? Alright, uh, the proposal is what it is on, uh, the sheet here. And I would entertain a motion.
Quick question first, sorry, as I delayed. Um, if we wanted, cause there's property line questions, I think for lack of better words, can we make a contingency to our recommendation to have that verif- well, I assume it would have to be verified because there's gonna be a purchase there, but can we make that in our recommendation?
So there's a survey in county records. If the city doesn't go off of that, I don't know if the city's gonna go off of it.
I would recommend a legal advice.
Right, but even if it is, we're, that we wouldn't be changing, that even, it, if it's just the way the Davies say it is, um, which I have no idea one way or another. Even if we change it to a C2, no one can, it's not like a commercial can come right in there anyway. There's, it's still their land if it is that way in fact. If it isn't, then yeah, a commercial could come right to wherever that line's drawn in the, in the records.
That was my point earlier too.
Right.
It could still be the backwater if it is though.
Yeah.
Even if, right, so let's, and I hope you'll bear with me on this. But, um, you know, maybe from the Davies' perspective, worst case scenario, let's say that, you know, indeed as Mr. Ernest has represented, this property is owned by somebody other than the Davies. The city's not obligated to change the zoning on that anymore. You know, so that's one way to look at it and, you know, relative to, to what you think is appropriate from the zoning perspective, the ownership doesn't necessarily have to be a decision you're over.
And I guess I agree with your point in the fact that it's not going to change the way that they can use their property regardless. Sorry.
Nonetheless, the applicant does own the property there and is requesting the zone change, which they have a right to do as well, they own the property. So, uh, and it's, it's, it's not an easy decision because-
Mike, can I show them one, one more thing? Can I show you one more thing? The neighbor letter? The neighbor letter? This might help you. I, I should've showed you this. It's, it's important.
Do you?
Uh, the reasonable support letter. I'll just leave you with that.
So the Johnson, the Johnson support that.
Yeah, it sounds like many of the neighbors as well, but. We don't have any.
Was Birch in which one?
They're all Johnsons.
They're all Johnsons as well as the one on the corner up above. That one. Jay Birch.
Would you, for proposal?
Yeah. Like you make a motion that the Johnson fourth east zone change from R one-six to C two um, be approved, uh, based on staff's findings and conditions?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 So that motion passes.
I don't think this one's on the main board, I think the. Yeah, a couple that we pushed back to the fourth.
I think this one is on the city council's agenda.
Do we need to wait for Joseph?
Brandon, Brandon. Oh, you're waiting for Joseph. Can you tell me what we need tabled? We didn't table anything, that was, oh, I thought you skipped. That was a poor joke on my, oh.
We can dig something else up if you want.
That is the humor we have to do with.
Dave's pretty good at that.
I was trying to table Joseph's item, but.
So, we advance to, uh, number five on the agenda, Title fifteen amendments. And this is well, this is a public hearing as well.
Oh yeah, we love this.
Um, and I don't know that we necessarily need to wait for Commissioner Ernst, um, but if you need a break.
Nope, we're good.
Okay.
Let's do this thing.
So quickly, if we, uh, as you're aware, every year, state legislature meets and sometimes changes come out of those, uh, sessions. This year, there were a lot of changes related to accessory dwelling units. And so Dave, or Commissioner, or I can't speak, Director Anderson and I sat down with our city attorney and I drafted the following uh, changes so that we can remain compliant with the changes in state code. Now, I would like to point out that some of these changes, the governor has indicated will not go in effect until October. But as staff, we really see no reason why to hold off on making the changes, um, at this point. So, um, the first item, they're out of order as far as numerically, but the first item is separate from the ADUs. A big change that was done is no longer are we required for most noticing items to place it in a newspaper. Um, that's a cost savings thing and we also feel that it's not really an effective means of notice anymore. So, we're striking, uh, that requirement in city code so that we no longer have to, to do it. Um, even if state code said we didn't have to do it, we could still put that requirement in, but we're striking it to match the changes in city code. So, as you can see here, there will still be notices that will be mailed to adjacent property owners as well as notices that will be posted on the property for conditional use permits and zone changes.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Uh huh.
Do you have a, a, an online way that you also post, like on the city website or for the public hearings?
We use the, um, the very last line, the state notice website. There's a public notice website that we're required to upload our agenda items to. Um, and it's really handy. I wish Kimberly was here, she could explain it better. But you can go on and set parameters and say, I wanna be notified of every notice or agenda within ten miles, within five miles, within, you know, this city, within this county. And then you'll get an email notification saying, hey, Utah County Planning Commission just uploaded an agenda for their meeting next week. Or Spanish Fork City, uh, council has posted an agenda. So then you can go, um, some cities I know use the website and attach items and everything. I think we just use it at the bare minimum to post, here's the meeting, here's the time, here's the place, here's the items. And so then we upload all of our attachments and reports to board docs.
Okay.
So the next change, we're not starting, no, I'm sorry.
Hey, if you're already used, you can use those.
So a lawyer walks into a book. The next.
A Utah bar?
The next one is, uh, dealing, the, the next few pages are dealing specifically with ADUs. So previously, um, our definition, we defined it as an accessory apartment. This ADU definition, we took verbatim out of state code. We didn't see a reason not to just adopt that.
Just comply.
So if we jump to the next page, let's scroll down a little bit, oh, sorry, go up. So you can see we're striking accessory apartment and we're striking mother-in-law apartment. Uh, the next change we're make, the few changes that we're making are just clarifying them as a permitted use. So you can see the first section relates to just the RR zone, indicating that it's a permitted use subject to conditions. And we've referenced the supplement, supplementary regulations section there. We're doing the same in the residential districts. We're changing, anywhere we have accessory apartments, we're changing it to accessory dwelling units. And then we had just a little bit of cleanup in this line here. So R three is in a different section, um, here, so we just struck that and there was a O that was floating in the middle of, of the list of zones, so we took that out and placed it here. If we scroll down to the next one, R three, uh, we've got some changes, taking out the accessory and mother-in-law apartments. It's still referenced when we only allowed them in the R one-six and the R three.
Sure.
We're just cleaning that up. Supplementary regulations, once again, cleaning it up to read ADUs, if we go down. Um, this is where we jump into the meat and potatoes. So, we do allow them to be in a detached nature, so if it's in an accessory structure, we do have some specific requirements as far as materials and setbacks. But the main change is just accessory apartments being swapped out. Here, um, this is where the state code comes into play. So if we jump down to C, or sorry, D, in October, the state code is changing to indicate that cities may not restrict ADUs based on lot size. But then in a subsection below, it says a city may, uh, restrict it on lots six thousand square feet or less. So we figured, let's just go with six thousand feet or above. Um, and then another provision that the state code allows is a city can identify parts of the city that are zone residential that they do not want to permit ADUs. For us, that's our R four and R five zone, we don't permit ADUs, that's our high-density, uh, apartment, uh, condo stack flats kind of zones. Another change that the state code made that goes into effect is we can only require one parking space per an ADU. So if you read currently, if you're in the downtown area, we said you need four. Two for the house, two for the ADU. If you were in any other zone, we said you need five if one of those is in a tandem scenario. And so if you think two-car garage, two-car driveway, that would be considered tandem. What we currently require for a home, if you go to our off-street parking restriction or regulations for a home, minimum one-car garage and minimum one additional space. And so our thought was in prepping it this way, we want the minimum three that we're allowed to require, but we also don't want the ADU space to be tandem. We don't see that being beneficial where if the homeowner and the tenant are having to swap whose parking when so they can leave and back out their car and stuff. And so, the change we made, in addition to that, is no longer allowing the tandem parking only as it applies to the ADU. So if they have the two-car garage and the two-car driveway, that will still work. We just have to have them identify, yes, they can park on the driveway, okay? Um, if we scroll down.
What if they have that, but they're still using the street because they don't want them to park tandem?
That's a tricky situation. We do get the complaint about.
Happens in my neighborhood.
Yeah, and so what we require when we approve the ADU is they have to show that they have off-street parking available and provided. What tends to happen though is exactly that, the owner will say, I'm gonna park on the driveway, you park in the street. Sometimes it's not an issue, a lot of times it is. And so, what we can do is require them to provide one off, onsite.
But not necessarily use it.
As it becomes an enforcement issue, we can look at it that way. Um, and so once again, in the off-street parking section, we're just making that change. Tandem parking is still permitted, so if you think of like a parking lot or if you think of a two-car garage and driveway, we still wanna permit that except when it's the required parking space for an ADU. Um, if we scroll down, I believe that's it. Was there any questions?
The lot size, we're going from seventy-eight to six thousand?
Yeah.
That's because the state has went down to that, um, small of a lot size.
They actually went smaller.
That's what smaller?
Then they gave cities permission to put a limit at six thousand.
At six, okay. So we're not fault, we're, we're the upper range of the, what the state is requiring or advising?
Advising.
Cause we could be.
We could say no lot, we could strike that entire line. Uh, if you scroll up, Mike, we could type, strike D altogether.
Or you could keep it at seventy-eight or whatever.
No, we can't be.
We can't, we can't require more than six thousand.
Yeah.
We can't require more, okay.
But the way it's written, without the exception, is we would have to strike that line altogether.
Yeah, and allow it to be.
Cause the idea on that is that, uh.
Affordable housing?
Yeah, well, if a person, if a person wanted an ADU and has the house, it's more than likely it's gonna be his basement.
This is entirely incident.
I mean, that's a small lot.
Right, you can touch on that, internal versus.
Um, well, we, we allow it in both scenarios.
We do, but from the state's perspective, I think the, the bill was entirely earmarked.
For internal.
For internal.
Basements, yeah.
Right.
The person's detached, yeah.
Yeah. So, I mean, it'd be pretty hard to have a detached ADU on six thousand.
You'd have to, pretty vertical.
You'd, you'd be surprised what they do in Portland, huh? It's pretty interesting.
Yeah, I saw the pictures of tent cities and stuff too.
Let's go to Salt Lake.
Any questions on this one?
Pretty straight up, I think. Are there any questions from anybody?
Do you wanna hold a public hearing before the.
Right.
So, we'll go into public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to address the, the mission? If not, we'll go out.
Yeah, just a quick shout-out. This is to prove that we are a good actor city and that we follow the state law.
We don't, we don't need to prove that, we, we are.
Oh, we're well known.
We like to prove it.
We're a good actor city.
Wait, you should say that at the microphone, Dave.
Yeah, you, you intentionally left that state right there. Okay, we're out of public hearing. Any other questions or comments, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we, um, adopt the changes amendments to Title, the Title fifteen amendments. Or that we recommend to the city council that the changes be made.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good. Anything else before we close?
That's it.
Amen.
I make a motion that we close the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Work session, if you wanna do that, if you're like, you're sorry.
Let's, uh, let's close the meeting and, uh, we'll have the discussion about, uh.
We can hit the.
Other stuff, yep. Thank you.